Just a reminder for anybody new in the room, we are recording.
More additions to the agenda. Get it off? Can you get it off?
I was just gonna... So it didn't blow a race.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn. Been made to approve the agenda here. Been made and second approved agenda, all of them favor, same on. Both. Period. Minutes. Been made and approved minutes as written, is our second. Second. Motion made and second approved the minutes as written, all of them in favor, same on. Both. Visitors. Mr. Howard wants to come up and sit down. Here. Sure.
Ready? My question is alley access. Tree is probably, I don't know. I think it's last name Walters, who lives behind me, there is now new tractor hay bale or conditioner right lane in the ditch. And along the frontage road where he normally parks. Normally, there's two cattle trailers sitting there. One of them, most of the time is not connected to anything. Multiple vehicles, one in the corner that hasn't moved yet. There's two other trailers that are, I believe, in the alleyway, and then there's a van that's right behind where I pull into my backyard. That's been sitting there for two years, at least. And I don't know if it's on his property, or if it's the alleyway, or what, or...
Did you figure out the width of that alley? Did you look that up?
I did not find documentation of that, except what's on the map, which is about 20. I think it said 20.
He's got stuff on that.
Oh, all the time. Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't move.
Yeah, it doesn't move. There's a car that's on the corner of the alley that's been there for three weeks now. Let's talk to you.
What has it been, two years since we got on him, I think, or something, remember we?
Yeah, we talked about cleaning up.
And he's not the only one. I mean, it's the whole alley down there. I mean, there's some other trailers. They're usually not an issue as long as they pull them up against their fences.
I think that alley is probably wider than you think.
Yeah.
Because we've got cables and stuff in there.
Okay.
And I'm sure that's on city's.
Yeah, and I don't know. And like I said, even if my trees are in the wrong, let me know. I can cut my trees back. But I mean, I know in the winter time, Danny Holing got stuck twice last winter trying to get down there with the propane truck. And like I said, that van is right behind where the only place I could pull into my backyard there unless I cut more trees down.
Which one for privacy?
What? Yeah, and I can't back a trailer in there anymore. I mean, I'd have to take it off by hand and put it there. I can back a trailer, but that was too tight.
I think we probably need to find out what axle with that alley.
Yeah.
In the back, I think somebody's, we've got quite a few approaching, I think, on that.
Yeah.
Just looking at where my equipment is.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure it's not on private property. And look where all the fences are at.
Yeah.
The fences are all aligned. I'm sure they would, they didn't build their fence.
Yeah.
You know, they went up to city property, I'm sure. They were with what they could.
Yeah, even, even one guy got a trailer back there. I mean, he can move it six feet closer to his fence, and it's always on the edge of the two-lane track that he gotta drive down.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not very big the way it is.
No.
And I gotta go back there a lot. I know exactly what you're talking about. It's tough. You're scraping the trees the whole distance.
The one, I think it was last winter, he had a long cattle trailer. It was a really long one. It was parked on the edge there all winter long.
Probably a little bit shorter.
I don't know why he, he's gone to farm.
Four miles on town.
Why don't we get Derek to go out and put flags up, go, here's where the property lines are. Here's where city property is. If you're part, you're on city property. There's no reason why, you know, we can put flags up. It's going, here's where it is. This is where your property is.
Yeah, and there's, there's only been two different times when I couldn't get out, come into the front. He had parked right smack in the middle of the road, and I had to go through the ditch to get around him.
Well, there's one night I was out, I think it was about midnight or so, and I had to go down there to the power outage, and I had to go check.
Yeah.
I barely made it between what was there in that car.
Yeah.
I, you know, you're just barely moving, and it squeaks.
Yeah.
And it's, it's not right.
I come out of there every day with my work truck.
And you gotta look at me, granted, I'm sure the fire trucks gonna come from the front side, but if they have to.
Yeah.
They might want to use that, too.
Right now, with the way that tractor's sitting there, if you came from the north to the south, you'd never make a corner if you have a trailer with you. You wouldn't, you wouldn't make the corner. So.
I think we definitely need to start marking out the ways.
Andy, is that something that, for his cattle trailer that's sat there for six months without moving, is that something you guys can?
We can talk to him or cite him.
I mean.
I mean, there's, there's still that, you know, seventy-two hour ordinance for parking.
And I didn't know if they had some sort of ordinance where your, a vehicle's gotta be attached to it, if it's on the railway or whatever.
Believe it or not.
Because I know we do, we did in mine.
Anything on the street's gotta be moved within seventy-two hours, or they can be killed.
No matter what.
Yeah.
And yeah, I know, I verify their several things, you know, those trailers have not moved.
Oh, no.
I mean.
Every once in a while, they move, I mean.
We get spicy, it seems like. I've been told that he doesn't like being moved.
Oh, true.
But he can't put there. But when it's a public street and you're blocking access, everything, you know, it's.
Sure, just a concern I have, and like I said, if you're doing nothing wrong, it's fine.
You're not the only one. We've heard it last year a lot, too.
Yeah, there's different, there's different rules we can put in town.
Yeah.
You have to buy by these.
Yes. Yeah.
Oh. Get hold of Derek then more and have him measure that alley out and play both sides. He should have books on that.
He was just on the phone, and his timeline is a little bit out there, but over the next two weeks, I have a long line of building permits for him, too.
Okay.
So, um.
But fire protection is the number one priority there. Like, a fire truck would never be able to.
Well, that's the one they got would never make it.
Because, I mean, you have to go in the alley, fight the fires lots of times.
Yeah.
You know.
Your trucks stood down? Not yet.
Especially that big one, that'd never make it.
Yeah, no, that would never make it.
Is that, is that our responsibility to trim those trees up along the alleyway? If they're on that.
If they're hanging over the sink. Again, let's get our lines out. Get the lines first, but if they're hanging over the alley right away, yes, we trim them.
And I know a lot of guys have trimmed them all the way down, just about to mine anyways. I haven't trimmed mine yet, but I sure can, so.
And the city guy will do it, too, if it's on the truck.
But I've got guarantee right now, if you drive down those tracks, you're gonna be scrubbing.
I, I rub my antenna on my truck, all my, my radio antenna on the side all the time. Yeah.
We'll dig into it a little.
So, sure. That's all I know. So.
Might be a little bit the way it sounds.
No, well, that's fine. I just wanted to bring your guys' attention, I guess.
And I know it's such a small alley, and we can't, our equipment won't, and we have clean snow, you know.
And like I said, he's not the only one down there.
No, and I mean, but I, we need to get this measured off, so we can pursue other things, because I know there's trailers on there, too. There's another pickup there, too. Another pickup.
Yep.
Pickup. Like I said, I have to go back. I know exactly what it's like.
Yeah.
I may have to go back and forth all the time. Okay.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
See you later. Mr. Sheriff, you got anything?
No, um. I, I called Amanda earlier today, and the only... I was trying to find out how wide the alleys are in Can Do and right of way and stuff. I couldn't find anything in the ordinance as far as what the city, a lot of the city's ordinances I looked at, they give you twenty feet for an alley. And I'm guessing that's probably a new thing, you know, within the last twenty, thirty years, but I don't think you do much good to... The alleys are where they're at. Can Do's not really gonna expand anywhere, but, but you had mentioned about, you know, finding that right of way, the utilities, that kind of thing. Makes it a lot easier to, you know, enforce that kind of thing.
Well, I think, like you said, you hear a property over here, a property over here, and you look at their lots, and you measure them. What's left can probably give you a tally.
Yeah, I would think so.
I think, too, there's overgrowth there, that if we had the lines marked, then we can clearly say they are obviously encroaching on the alley.
Is that, I was gonna say, is that something that our state could do, is remarking alleys, or is that something Derek's gonna have to do?
Derek probably shouldn't like pull from the streets. Yeah.
Well, five, I mean, it says right on the map what the lot is.
Yeah. It should be on a map somewhere, too, maybe. It might be on a map somewhere.
It'd be nice to have them all, actually.
I've got a map.
I know there's gonna be a project in a half.
Yeah, because we got a few alleys that are, and I drive the alleys a lot, that's where my stuff is at, and.
Like behind Chaz Wilson, and here, rent, do that there. I think you can drive that almost without getting slapped.
Between the six and seven. And our guys are pulling from home. I haven't been out. That's, that's what we need. They said a lot of times they get, they're gonna hammer it on my homeowners that you're probably. They're not. They're crushing towards the alley here. No, if they're in the alley, or hanging over the alley, it's, it's our responsibility to keep.
Yeah.
Yes, probably doesn't get done as much now either, because we don't run garbage trucks anymore. We used to have to do it just for the garbage trucks to get through, so. We'll see what we can dig up on that thing. Anything else?
Busy.
Busy. Find any more help yet?
Um. We hired a new office secretary, and we're still looking for a deputy.
Yeah. No deputy yet.
No.
Andy's no longer there?
She's gonna be coming in periodically.
Oh.
But, yeah, full time work. Wasn't working before.
Who did you hire?
Under Hirsch.
Oh, okay, that's why they're looking for a deputy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Well, nothing else. Anybody got any questions for Andy, or? Not, we'll continue on, go to some old business. We could jump down to new business there, add them, get yours out of the way, if you'd like to come up and sit down.
Sure.
Jump, jump forward a couple of weeks. I'm glad I moved up here. I'm part of hearing, hearing aids, but they don't really help much. So what has he got going?
Well, requesting an abatement on a property on, I think it's 302 on 14th Street. It's in a lot of disrepair right now, but also, I think maybe it was appraised a little bit higher than it should have been in the beginning. When I talked to your tax equalization gal, Leeds, I don't remember her first name.
And what?
Anyway, she had, you got these papers?
Yeah.
Okay. She had adjusted it there, and I talked to you on the phone an hour ago or less. So I probably ought to go to the meeting.
Basically, what happened is Sherry said that the adjusted value will be applicable for sure for 2023. What Mr. Walters is requesting is to have this apply for 2022 as well.
As well.
Um. Where this kind of gets complicated with us is all of our tax levies and stuff have already been calculated, so we would be short on our taxes. She.
He's saying it's common. I'm adding, we're gonna, you're gonna pay them for pointing.
So what would end up happening if you, if you grant this abatement, it would go to the county, and the county would have the authority to grant it or deny it, regardless of you guys say. So, um, this is the starting point, is to request the abatement on the city level. She said, and maybe I already mentioned it, regardless for next year, she would adjust the value to that ninety-seven.
But I think the property was valued high in the beginning, because, you know, it's, it's in a lot of disrepair right now, but that didn't happen overnight. It's been, you know, it's been, the house has been built, and I think, I think they got it completed in eighty-one. There's never been any improvements on it. It had shingles put on about fifteen years ago. But it's just the same houses that was built in nineteen eighty-one, you know, and no improvements whatsoever. And I, I think the appraisal was high in the beginning, too, so.
Well, they're, basically, the appraisals go according to what houses are selling for, so that's, that's what's keeping everybody up to high right now. Houses have been selling so high, and that's what they base all these on.
Yeah, but I, I don't think this house would, um... Yeah, I don't, I can't answer that question. I don't know how they're selling, so. But.
The size of the house.
I, I know that the house has not had any improvements on it. I think it's been adjusted high from the beginning. And I'd like to get it down, because I am, it's in a lot of disrepair right now, and I am going to be fixing it up. But I think the taxes are a little bit out of order on it as well, so.
We got one box.
So it looks like they're gonna lower fifty, aren't they?
Yeah.
This is the process they kind of lost first for this, man?
Yes.
Okay.
It's kind of like our tax equalization. It comes to the city first. So what could have happened is, and I don't mean any disrespect, Mr. Walters, but what could have happened is Ed would have came to our tax equalization meeting and talked about the evaluation of his home at that point. And then, you know, we could have wiggled it then, but, um, with it being now, I think taxes are due soon. I think we'll send out the bills in October. Sherry said that, um, I asked her opinion on this. I said, what have you seen? And she said she doesn't know on the county level what they would recommend.
I do know that, I got that letter, they're writing the taxes on all the farm, farmland as well. Yeah, that's all been readjusted. Do you?
All it is. So this reappraisal that she's got won't go effect until twenty-three?
Yeah. Because the taxes for twenty twenty-two have already been assessed.
But I think she said, I think, was it Sherry? Yes. She said that when we file for an abatement, we can actually go back two years and readjust. Is that true?
I don't know.
Uh, that would be, uh, yes, but this application is only for twenty twenty-two, so you'd have to fill out a different application for twenty twenty-one.
That's what I did.
There is just one here, um. I don't know.
Because we did discuss that, yeah.
I don't know on the county level again, you know.
They, they give you the ultimate approval. We could say we're gonna do it, and they say, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, really, really stuff for common, you know. They can, they send letters out here.
So why am I here?
This first step. Either way, if we approve this, they don't have to, but then it goes back to them, so.
Okay.
That's the way it works.
And then it would go to the county commissioners, not Sherry. So she's made her evaluation of it.
So I have to go fill another paper out with Sherry for an abatement to go back for?
If I'm understanding it correctly, that's, it says, file this with the county auditor on or before November one of the year, following the year in which the taxes become delinquent.
Yeah. Do you have a photograph or picture of the house I'm talking about?
I don't have a picture.
Yeah. This picture here, I believe, was in two thousand and eleven, but these were in two twenty-two, if they might see it.
And the rodent control been pretty good down there?
Pardon?
The rodents?
Well, I set some food traps and poison out. I did catch a few mice, but, uh, I haven't caught any in the last four days, so.
The neighbors did catch.
Hi?
The neighbors did catch a few, caught one, one rat that I know of, but.
Yeah.
I think when you started cleaning, I thought they scattered.
I think they probably left.
You've always paid the taxes on this?
Pardon?
You've always paid the taxes on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you, you haven't paid twenty-two yet?
We're not due yet, so. We're paying before the thirty-first of December, right? They're all doing.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. We can. Do it. Are you like?
For the bill.
Will you plan on fixing this up, then?
Well, I'm still cleaning out there, I guess. Probably start to, I might say it this fall, I don't know. But.
It's not gonna be a grub on, it's something you're gonna get done, probably gonna sell it, I imagine, or?
It'll be sold when I get it finished, but I'm not gonna promise it's done quickly, you know, I'm gonna do a lot of work myself. And I'm getting old and slow, so. I figure a two-year project on that house.
It is gonna get fixed up. I don't think it's worth that, but it's not real to me.
This is square footage roughly, well done.
Pardon?
What's the square footage on that?
A little over twelve hundred. I think she's got it on here on one of these papers.
Same part of that, part of the appraisal thing on there, too, though, is the state has to, the state has to be coinciding with what replacement cost is versus the purchase cost. Because right now, houses for replacement costs are at least a hundred and twenty dollars a square foot. And that's, that's on the low end. So you're going for a hundred and forty-five to a hundred and fifty a square foot.
It's twelve hundred and thirty-eight feet.
So you take that times a hundred and twenty bucks, you got a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. That's one of the times where that price is, that's where that price is coming in.
Yeah, but that's in a house that's in good, good, good repair, right?
Well.
This thing needs a lot.
Yes, yes and no.
This thing needs a lot of repair. The siding is original, the windows are original, the furnace is original, everything is original in that house, yeah.
But like, or like, say, far as replacement cost, if it was to burn down, if, if you had had a replacement cost of ninety-seven thousand, you'd only get that. If you had a replacement cost of a hundred and forty-five, you'll get the hundred and forty-five.
Yeah, I understand that.
You know, and if it's, and if it should be a hundred and fifty thousand, you're not gonna get your full assessed value. You know, the state, that's one of the things the state was doing, is they're trying to bring the, the taxable out to the replacement cost, or what, because there was such a huge variance in there. They were trying to correct that, because people were having a hundred thousand dollar house, but the taxes on it were three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, Sherry came out, and she prayed, she changed her appraisal of the house. You have this copy?
Yep, yep.
Okay, she dropped it from a hundred and forty-seven down to ninety, ninety-seven. I know, she took fifty thousand off right, right there, right off the bat.
Yeah.
That's one thing we gotta be careful, is it's a state. We've gotta maintain over ninety percent of the value of these houses. We have to be taxing that much, or they penalize. They will come, they'll come and do it for you.
In the state of this house, it's not, the value's not there right now.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying, what you're saying. We gotta be careful, too.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. It's gonna go up again if he fixes it.
Yeah.
Right, that's something, I'm just gonna fix it, you know. Fix it up, it's gonna go higher.
Well, I understand that. This'll give me a little leeway here. You know, I gotta put quite a bit into fixing it, too, so I'm short of money, too. I gotta go out and borrow, so.
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the abatement for twenty twenty-two.
Okay, motion made, is there a second?
One second.
Motion made and second, approve the abatement for Walter's house, all of them in favor, same by the same on. Both. And sign, motion carried.
You approved it for twenty twenty-two now?
Yeah, we, we have, but now it goes to the county for their approval.
And if they say no, that's it.
Yeah.
Our, our vote here doesn't need it.
We're recommending it. We're recommending, we're recommending it to them, so that's your idea.
That's the way it works. Hopefully it'd be a plus.
Yeah.
Pardon? Hopefully it'd be a plus.
What I'll do, Ed, is I will pass this to the county, and I'll put that we approved it, and then they will do their thing, and then they'll let you know.
I'm probably gonna go see Sherry again and apply for that abatement for two years back.
Twenty-one, okay.
Because we talked about, we talked about that, and I thought that's what we're doing.
How long has it been empty?
A couple of months, three months, four months.
Oh, if it's livable, I don't know what you're.
Well, no. I admit, my daughter was in there, and I, I knew she was a bad housekeeper, but she, she was bad. It was terrible in there. And I didn't know, I wasn't aware of her. I certainly would have been on top of it sooner. I just did not know, you know, and we don't communicate a lot, and, you know, it's just the way it is. What it is is what it is, you know? And I can't go back and change anything, so. But I have to go forward, and I plan on it, so.
Well, we'll just.
Okay.
Continue on to that, then.
Are we done?
Yes, we're done, thanks, Ed.
Well, thank you.
That'll be a month before they meet.
Um, I think they were supposed to meet. Yeah.
Oh, they didn't meet this Tuesday?
Should I? They meet in the morning, don't they?
They do.
Usually, the first Tuesday of the month, so.
Yeah.
I saw something on the board about that.
Joni was gonna be gone or something.
Oh, okay, so yeah, they might talk about Friday then.
Should I attend that meeting, too?
You know, I'll let you and Joni talk about that.
Okay.
I'm not really sure, but I'll email this to her tomorrow morning, so that she has it. Um, and you can just call the courthouse and talk to Joni, if they, yeah, Joni's the auditor.
Oh, Joni Marla.
Yeah, okay.
And Sherry's part is kind of done in this, unless you wanna do, attempt to do an abatement.
I'm gonna attempt to do the abatement.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
See you, Ed.
No speeding tickets, that's good.
Think you got your work cut out for you there.
Pardon?
I think you got your work cut out.
I know, and I'm gonna do most of it myself, so.
No, I saw you over there.
Close by there?
No, I was over Swanson there.
Yeah, I'm working at it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, a lot of the sheetrock, and you already go, you had to tear it off.
Basically, when you got the house, and pretty much have to, it was that bad.
Yeah, I think, well, Tim and Joel built that for Clarence Pauls. Was it Clarence?
Might have been Ronald.
Ronald.
That, yeah.
That's who they built it for.
Okay.
And then he must have inherited when he.
Sure, yeah. He got it, I suppose.
His wife was Pauls.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll move on, part-time employee reviews, I guess.
So I have this on there, on here, because. So I have this on there, on here because um we didn't really get clarification at the last meeting, um. If we are leaving Mike at part-time, or if we're bringing him on at full-time, or what we are doing.
Yeah, that's.
I guess me, I, I recommend that we hire him full-time. I just see things are getting done, and they're working together, what else? Firstly, I'd like to see that.
Uh, we haven't done budget yet, for next year?
Yeah.
Oh, we did.
Yeah.
We budgeted for it.
Yeah, I think you should come on full-time.
A couple when?
I've heard, I've heard lots of compliments.
So, yeah, so we had that employee meeting, so I just said, you know, let's bring on the generalist, talk, let's see what's, what you guys think. If they're hurt, we'll put a motion forward and hire them.
His.
What would be the start date?
We what?
Uh, when's probation up? That's awkward.
It's already, yeah.
No, when would the start date to be full-time?
Right away. See, his probation period's over now, so. And I guess he's passed out, okay.
Once we approve it, I guess it'd be effective just about immediately, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it'd be effective right now, yeah.
Are we gonna change wage though? Cause we had talked about that.
We did bump in the wage, and then I think when this year as well.
Look at it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he'll get in on the raises.
Yeah, yeah. That's, I think, the way we budget it.
They definitely should be brought in, because you know, you don't know how long Bruce is gonna be there, his health and stuff.
No, and you've got a learning curve here.
Pardon?
You've got a learning curve.
That's right.
You know, and now you've got that driver for the big truck in the winter time.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea, I think, to bring him on, so.
You want a motion for that? I make a motion that we hire Mike.
Oh, Rudy, okay. Motion made and second, then to hire Mike for full-time, so all those in favor, say five to say nine.
Hi.
Posed, same sign.
So then, we also had Kathy's review, and um. I mean, there was nothing, um. No concerns there, um. So I think Raleigh and I had agreed that she would be due for a raise too, right? Is that kinda what we talked about? Um, she has a concern or a request, um. She's been a dedicated employee for a year, and she's happy with full, with part-time hours. Uh, what she's requesting is to mimic what is done in a different department. And to build vacation hours, um based on her hours worked. And also when we are closed and it's like a holiday, that. She could have that day paid as well, so that she doesn't have to figure out how to make up her time. Um, I don't have that request in writing, but that, that is what she was wondering. Um, she's going on maternity leave in a week, and so her request would be um effective beginning of the year.
Push the pencil and see what that, what that would cost.
It doesn't actually cost us anything, considering she's a part-time employee. She just would get paid for work she's not doing. So, like, the paid holiday, um. She went, right, right.
You can't really do that, can you?
Well, we're, we're paying the librarian vacation. And she's part-time.
How much vacation does she get in here?
I don't know. Yeah, there's a certain percentage of accrual. I wanna say it's like one point nine hours a paid period or something like that.
It depends on how many years of service. For hours that you've worked.
Cause she's part-time, it would accrue at a different rate than full-time employees, but um. That's just when we were going over the handbook and payroll and all of that, she just kind of had some questions on that, and she.
I think all part-timers should be treated equally. I mean, Hazel's getting.
There's a small, there's a small difference, though. Hazel was given that by her board and with levied funds. So.
Oh.
There's a little bit of a difference there, but it's not specified in our handbook differently, so.
Well, yeah, we got a little time to think about this.
Yeah.
Kinda give us some numbers.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause you know what she's working for hours, and, and figure it for the full year, not the maternity.
Sure, I can figure, you know, whatever holidays we have to go with, paid holidays, or whatever it is that we have, and.
Well, basically, that's not gonna change really, because she works a four-day week. Now she's done a three-day week, you're paying her that eight hours, whatever.
Essentially, she just takes a cut in pay on a day that we're not open.
Yeah.
Or she has to figure out how to creatively make up her hours.
For instance, the Monday she works Tuesday through Friday.
If, yeah, kind of, yep.
Like this week.
She is um more part-time right now, because she's doctoring, you know, but on a regular basis, that's how that would be, yeah.
Get some numbers, but.
Okay.
We have a lot of time yet. Sewer project, I think we got Brad chomping at the bit there.
Can you hear us? Evening. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so what we did was we, we added the option uh that we talked about at the last meeting. And, and we called it uh option two C. And so if you flip to page four of eight of your packet there. Uh, so what, what was brought up at the last meeting was, you know, what if, what if we look at just doing a sewer reline. Uh, from manhole four to three, so that's underneath those homes. Uh, reline that pipe and then do the, install the new pipe then from that manhole three. Uh, east and then to the new lift station, and you know, what would that cost? Uh, so we crunched the numbers and we're coming up with four hundred and seventy thousand dollars uh for this option. Um, and so to, to give you a reference, the, the option two A, uh, that was to, you know. Re, replumb that pipe from under the homes and put that out in the street. Uh, and, and redo that uh block and a half, and that, that was eight hundred and eighty thousand for, for that option. So, you know, this, this option is about half of that, um. Little less than half, but.
Are those ones under the house, are they PVC pipes or, you know?
The existing pipe under, uh, that's there is clay. Yeah, that's, that's a clay pipe currently. And then, uh, so the adding, adding to that, if you flip to the back page of your packet. Um, we added a scenario three, which, which includes, you know, the, the new lift station, the force main to the lagoon. Uh, includes this option two C. And then includes option three, uh, which is the pipes going into the lagoon uh cells. Uh, includes option four, which is relining underneath the railroad tracks. Option five, which is up by the school, those couple blocks of replacement up there. And then uh option six, which is all that re- replacement over on the east end of Maine.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so you can see what total construction cost is, and then we're showing. Two hundred and sixteen thousand would be remaining i- is our estimate. Uh, for this scenario three.
Oh, that would save us a lot of money. But we're still in the house.
Yeah, I agree, it's been there a long time.
Yeah. Were those ever camered under those houses? I mean, how, what kind of shape are they in, you know? I don't know if we did.
Yeah, that was, it was cammered, uh. The existing pipe is in fair condition, you know, there's some cracking, uh, nothing that was real alarming. But it, at the time, which, you know, there again, it's twenty sixteen footage. Uh, it looked like it could just be relined uh with, with no spot repairs.
Your positive four to four A is plastic.
That, I went back and looked, uh, they, they did not camera that one. Um, and so I would say I'm not positive of that. Uh, maybe, you know, Scott could probably open four and four A and just look down in there and, and probably tell.
All right.
Yeah, I, I did double-check that one, and that one was not cammered.
Definitely makes more sense to me. This last one makes more sense to me, like you said.
Re line that under the house.
Re line the one under the house.
Yeah.
You can see that's twenty sixteen. Pictures looking at two, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Six years on there.
Again.
Cause if you don't, if you do it the other way, you still gotta fill it.
You gotta fill it.
Just think that last, last stuff was a nightmare. The last, uh.
Well, hopefully we get somebody better than.
Right now, yeah.
I wonder if it'd be. Smart, favorite to go the re-line, but maybe get a new pictures of it. Pretty quick here, just so we know it can be done.
Yeah, that might not be a bad idea. Uh, you know, that, even the, the other segments, uh, that, that we're gonna be relining to just redo those. Uh, if they come to town to do that, this segment, they might as well do under the tracks again and, and a few other spots, uh, just to confirm. Everything's still looking all right.
You're building six years old, I mean, a lot could change. You know.
Yeah, and that, that, that could be part of uh the project, just some preliminary televising, yeah, so that's all included. Or eligible.
Yep, and save us some money for other things. What do they? Well, is the pipe's good underneath?
Yeah, yeah.
There's a little deep PVC once they put it in there, so. Okay, let's, let's pursue that way, Brad, I think, just try and get somebody up here to get the stuff cambered that you want right away, as quick as you can.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we'll put together a packet and go out for some quotes and uh. And we'll go that route, uh, you guys are kind of thinking to, option two C though, um. Versus, versus re-lining out in the street and all of that.
Yeah, right, rely on the house, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, if it's possible, I guess.
Okay, that sounds good, uh, yeah, we'll get something together, uh, you know, the other thing is when there. Let's just say there is a couple hundred thousand dollars of, of funding or estimated construction costs left. Um, if you guys have, you know, we've, there's other spots around town, uh, that, that could be done, um, and so. You know, we could, we could bid a few different other options that, you know, depending on how the prices come in, you guys could choose or not choose, so.
Right, yeah, yeah, that will be, yeah. We can do that later.
Once you see what this construction's gonna be, then we'll know. And the way it's been going, it'll probably be more than we think anyway, you know. Everything is going on.
Okay, well, sounds, sounds good, uh, that's all I had for you guys tonight, uh, we'll, we'll get that. Uh, clean or the televising packet put together and get that, we'll send it to you for your review. Uh, and then if everything looks good, we'll get that sent out. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Yep.
Can we go back to the part-time employee? Sorry, um. With Mike being full-time, it brings up a couple of different. Subjects such as an on-call phone.
What?
A telephone. So apparently Bruce was given the option to take a city phone or not take a city phone. To deal with on-call.
I think that's the point, everybody called him on a straight-up phone.
Mm-hmm. So Mike has a little unique situation happening since he's on the ambulance. The ambulance, um, it's a different plan and a different type of phone. Uh, to work with their system. So we have two options, we can either issue Mike a city phone. Um, that would be an iPhone that would be compatible to the lift station calling him when he's on call. Um. The second option would be, he would keep his phone. Number that he has in his personal phone that the ambulance is helping pay for. But to upgrade it to an iPhone so that it could work with the lift station, uh, the city would. Maybe pay to upgrade it to an iPhone, cause he has an Android. Or C, we leave it as is, um, and he. His personal number is not available to give out.
Where's the phone Bruce had, he turned it in?
I have no idea. I'm sure it's not um even. Doable anymore.
Wasn't it an iPhone? Did they both have iPhones?
Well, before my time, I don't know.
We're gonna ask him, but I'm sure he's probably outdated anyway.
I've been here for a.
You could do it on straight talk or something simple like that. Or Mike.
Well, it would go on the Verizon plan that we have, the city plan.
Yes, it is.
Well.
What's the two-year contract, doesn't he get one free?
Uh, I, I'd have to talk to our Verizon rep on that, but there isn't free phones anymore. It's like a twelve hundred dollar phone or more, they're not, they're not free. Um, you can do a contract that would be a certain percentage of your price to buy the phone. Um, the lines are like forty dollars a month, like that's what Scott says. Like I said, I'd have to talk to the Verizon rep if that.
Why do we have to go on that plan?
Because then it's city-owned.
Call phone, and whoever's got that phone?
That is Scott's phone, so when he quits, or when he leaves, the phone comes back to us. That is what should probably happen.
Okay, so can't that phone just be the on-call?
That's not how the phones go, they're linked with an email address and your ID, and you've got, I mean, you can't, that's not how it works anymore.
The other city phone that Bruce had, that, that laying in the office of the water plant?
I have no idea, that's, like I said, I've been here a year and a half, more than a year and a half, and I've never seen it.
He only used it for a couple, three months, he dropped it, cause it just didn't work. He just used his own.
Yeah, I know, but, but can't Mike?
Maybe we can find it, we'll see.
It might be somewhere, somewhere, you know.
Verizon will drop phones, and once they get so old.
Yeah, because I got that was just part of the city plan, and those two phones. Even when I was there, the same number and everything.
Yeah, we dropped it though, so I don't know that we would retain the phone number.
Number's gotta be gone, I'm sure of that.
Yeah.
And the phone itself, I mean, things change so fast.
How old it is, my wife just bought a iPhone for straight talk for, iPhone eleven for, what'd she say, three hundred bucks?
That's what mine was, two hundred and eighty bucks or something like that.
That's moving up pretty decent. You don't need the top line, just check into it, call Verizon and talk to one of them, and we don't need nine thousand dollar phones.
Well, and that's, that's the hard part about these phones, they're, if you go through Verizon, which our plan is through Verizon. I mean, there's limited options, because we're a municipality, so we're already getting a discount on the lines and all of that, like.
Yeah, this is a twelve, and this is like two hundred and eighty bucks, this is the. Yeah, this is a twelve, and this is like two hundred and eighty bucks, this is the three eighteen T. Now, what the heck they sell down there, this is the. This is iPhone then, yeah.
So do some digging on that.
Okay, I will.
Yeah, we're gonna have to get an expensive one.
Any other old wiggles? Oh, the eight two S bill is gone.
Wait.
What, don't?
What?
I took care of that eight two S bill, it's gone.
Well, that's, that's in here.
The surveying.
Survey thing, yeah, throw it away.
Oh, okay. Our bills for approval.
Yeah, they're like on the bill, there was three of them from, from there. The, the new bill.
The one for the survey at the.
I added nine hundred, I'll take it off, I'll reissue that and take it out.
Just whatever, I mean, what, the, just the survey part for that grandstand, that, I got that taken care of, so.
I took care of that deal down at Dirk's too.
Oh, what'd you find?
Well. All of a sudden those shut-offs were right there, now I don't know what the deal is, that, you know. Scott and I took an hour and looked for them shut-offs and I pulled that area like. Yeah. I don't know where the heads came, but they're, they're right there, both of them for his house and. And where Teddy lived. And he's got a hole in the ground down near about eight feet. And there is a meter on there, man, said he just had one account, he's got two accounts.
It's in a different name, it's in Peterson.
He, uh.
Sanitation.
He actually doesn't shut that off in the winter, because there's a little heater down there on a service staff. And he said he's never had any problems with it, and then his shop is hooked to his house. You know, but he's.
So it is getting metered, yeah.
He's getting, he's paying for two.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, he, well, he actually, that tank is a split tank, cause he has to pick up. He, you know, he takes a hundred and some gallons of water and then, and then he picks up the same amount and then he dumps it there. So I guess he is paying for sewage, because he is pulling water.
Okay, that's good.
So it all washes out. Should, should work out already.
Yeah. Alright, we got a public hearing for that.
Oh, sorry, we have the derelict property email, you guys gotta talk about.
Oh, yeah, that's, apparently they're working, gonna do that.
It's on the back of the minutes.
Creed's house. You just got this today.
I did. She want to, um, find a contractor for the major repairs, uh. They're wanting to tear down the addition.
That's all the stuff to the west of the main house, I suppose. But that's the part that's the worst, yeah.
Yeah, but I hope they're doing the garage, it's just at the ceramic shop.
Throw the ceramic tour.
Just that, that walk-in between the garage and the house is the way with this on stake.
Okay.
Which is still okay, but that, that garage is sort of lactated, that siding is bowling and molding and, yeah, but.
Well, give him a chance here, I think, that's what we do, yeah, give him a chance.
You ought to give him a little chance, so.
That guy that bought tires on the side, he hasn't done anything on that.
He, um, had plans to come back and had a family emergency and then there's something happening in the house, cause he's using water. Not here, so, uh, he's like, do you know anybody that wants to buy a house? It kinda went from bad to worse.
What about the Comer's house? We gave those people so much time.
Yeah, have you talked to her anymore?
I sent her a letter, um, saying, you know, when, when is this gonna happen, you were gonna tear, tear it down and she didn't respond.
I think we kinda got snowed there.
Call her and say she's got thirty days to tear it down or it's gonna go back.
She's gonna get a bill.
We're gonna tear it down and send her the bill.
Yeah, that would be.
She'll be up here in a week and they've got the trucks in there.
They are, they don't do much, you know, so.
Are they the ones doing the wood, the trucks out there? No, I don't think so. Like Cali Road?
No, 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 they're one or two trucks. They were all gravel, they hired extra trucks.
Okay, okay. Cause I saw them.
Yeah, I think there was one in the box. And they're down there, so that truck's available now.
Um, I had, you know, the person that previously had brought all this up. Mister Corday, he's kind of been wanting some updates too, is it okay to update him on? That we're giving them, you know, till next summer to repair this or what?
Yeah, they want, or if he, I wouldn't go out of my way to call him, but if he calls you, just tell him, yeah, we're, it's in the works, they're supposedly hiring contractors, so. I guess I'd just tell him that.
Alright. And then Rick Reed's house as well, we're, we've given him till the end of this season to do any.
I thought he was doing some repairs on that too.
He was going to fix the parts that Derek said he would have had and then. Go from there.
Yeah.
Revisit this.
Anything there?
That's this one that we have.
That's the one here, it's in here, the, she's, they're trying, it's on the back of your minutes, Rudy, though. Her letter's in there, they're, they're trying to get a contractor and.
They're gonna tear the ceramic shop, uh, and then go from there.
So. We got the. Public hearing on that street vacation, wait, wait, catering up here, did you guys meet on that?
Uh, I wasn't there.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Unless they met again.
They did not meet again, um, kinda having a tough time arranging schedules, so Rudy was under the weather for a while, um. Wondering if we wanna give it another two weeks and get some committee together.
Don't need to give it any more time? I personally, I guess I, I'm fine with vacating, that's.
Yeah.
Myself, I don't know, the rest of you think? Huh?
I don't have a problem with that.
I need to be keeping the whole thing, how much, how much are they getting?
Line right up with the street, just.
First street right onto the Melzer property.
And then I'm coming, yeah. We need a motion of a vacated.
Motion to vacate Fifth Avenue off of Fifth Street.
North, north, north off Fifth, okay, third second, second, that motion remains, I will now vacate. Fifth Avenue going north somewhere. Next Gary Gamsers, so. Pauls and Baver's, I think, if I was saying hi.
Hi.
You got a building permit, but see, James Quitty must be, gotta pitch around the back, he's just there. You already did? Oh.
Why did he pay sixty dollars for this?
Cause of the value? Unless you wanna. Lessen it.
Yeah, it's up to five thousand thirty, anything over sixty up to twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
What's the shelves for?
Okay, so here I am, um. The vault project is going really well, uh, where the museum has been really good about working with us, so. What the plan was, there's two vaults, one vault is going to be, uh, secured record storage. And the other vault is going to turn into utility storage, cause there is no storage for anything in City Hall. So all entities that utilize that building, they will have free access to the snow shovel and the vacuum and whatever else will be in there. So I'm asking for two shelves, um, to put in there for supplies. I did not. I can, I can price quote if you guys are okay with me digging, this was just, thank you, thank you. This is just what, um, is in there now. There's, I'm just asking for additional shelving. And I don't know if they purchased from Uline or what, they're a long, long, long time ago.
Yeah, you can see either that or the dark restaurant or something.
Well, at least there you can see what you're getting.
I would be looking for the ones that are eighteen inches, um. Wide, because that holds a paper box perfectly, um, the long way. So I'd be looking at eighteen inches wide and, uh, the seventy-five inch tall, because the other ones don't fit.
Depth of eighteen inches. A wide then. What you're with?
Thirty-six.
You're looking at that H three, three, five.
That's right.
Five five?
Five, H three, three, five, four, five, three. That second one from the top. And I would like to purchase two. Okay, I can look around.
Better lose some work.
Okay.
Doc can maybe build you some other wood this winter, he's resting.
Well, if you remember, we did have a quote for, uh, desperately to build them. So. I'll look around for some comparable stuff.
Oh, you got a financial? See, well, how about we're there, so we ask.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have a financial report yet, but I have the bills for approval.
Financial.
Yeah, financial report's always the second meeting of the month.
You're busy?
Oh, that's the one.
Kinda got a hot one going, you know, you know that alleyway back. Behind Walters Place or Allen Howard, Allen Howard, Scott, well, there's Allen Howard, right on the east side of the Coldestacks. There's a little, little tiny alley back and I was wondering if you could figure out how wide that's supposed to be for us.
Check the map, most of the alley is twenty B. All ones are.
We're trying to do, trying to get flags to show property lines, let's see what's, what's left these alleys, I think we've got a lot of property owners that are there approaching in the alley.
Yeah, they're, they're parking so much junk back there that we're, they can't get through. And the fire trucks and everything, so we'd kinda like to get an idea, you know, a couple flags, I need three, four on each side, down, up and down the alley, so we can see where it's at. I don't know if you'd have to measure from the street in both ways or what, you know, but.
You might have to just do the property.
Yeah, it become, you know, from both streets into towards the alley.
Yeah, I was wondering if you could get that done maybe before too long, but.
Yeah.
I'm gonna hook the bell cord tomorrow night.
Family doesn't count.
Investment.
Uh. That's what, Thursday, Thursday. Thursday I'm in midgy. Friday.
Well, it's not the whole Friday, some die within the next week or two, if you know what you like.
I can add it to the two that I have sitting on my desk.
Yeah, and address and then something like that. Then I can figure it out, yeah, we're on Senex, they got, you know, all block seven, well, there's a couple of houses that are still on block seven and. They must own some property if they have a house there, so. I was trying to get the north boundary and that doesn't show up, and then, well, I'll get the east boundary, no, that didn't show up. But I did get the west corner marked, sort of.
Well, whenever you can get out that.
Yeah, that's, that's the money permits, alright.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so. Side to side, yeah, there, well, there's trailers, there's a couple abandoned vehicles back there and it's just. We can't get through there, and if there was ever a fire, there's no way fire trucks can be in there, so. We'd like to kinda know where it's at, so we can maybe, you know, get their stuff. Plot too small or it's wide enough to get them out, you know.
Send Andy out.
Sure.
We have three more additions of building permits.
Huh?
Three more additions of building permits.
Oh. Nathan Gibbons, they were gonna, he's gonna build a shop up there somewhere by the sports plus.
Yeah, he's taking that old building out of there, Teddy's moving that open up.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah, I thought it was gonna be done.
Do you have additional time, you have additional time on these?
Better. He's like, can't wait, yeah, he's got living quarters on here, seventy by thirty living quarters.
It'll just probably be higher if we wait, we nail the one.
That's, you know, South Africans.
You've got so much of that in town anyway, isn't it?
Yeah.
Look at Main Street, you got commercial buildings with apartments up above.
Something else to talk about on that Gibbons one, uh. Um, we have waived the square footage fee in the past for several commercials. You guys wanna do that or do you wanna charge them?
Just across, out of town, across the highway, we never waive anything in town.
That's what I'm asking, if you wanna leave it or.
No, we can't, when, when I really got on, Jody has billing notes like Pearl's. Paid for everything they put across there, then Jody finally figured out that we really can't be doing that, and even though we're zoned out that far, we're not, we shouldn't be charging them when they're across the highway, they're not in city limits, so. But this is in city limits, so they, they need to pay.
Um, I understand the fee, that's not what I'm asking, I'm asking, it's a, what is it, a hundred and twenty dollars plus so much per square foot?
Per square foot over twenty.
And you have waived the last probably three or four commercial, you've waived the per square foot.
For what business?
Well, it was for the hospital and Siggs was waived and.
Yeah, I could see for the colds, for the cold storage or shop.
That was the tax bait part of that, wasn't it, that was, uh.
No, they did, they, Mark was, at the time was, when I put up cold storage building. You know, you look at the square footage, you pay.
Eric is Ryan adding this onto that? So much.
What's that?
Is Ryan adding this onto that shop then? Oh, yeah.
On this elevator road, yeah.
On.
For me, just garage.
Living quarters.
Looks like this garage.
Well, it's gonna be a garage?
Yeah.
Could be a garage, huh?
Yeah, I used to.
That's his shop, the mini of.
The shop, the mini, it's a garage mall.
Yeah, garage mall.
So we just need to talk about the fee of the building permit.
So we haven't charged him anything yet?
I have a check in my possession.
For the home? He was willing to pay it then. I just say let it go, be paid it. I say, if it's already paid it, then I, I would say, if he, if he was requesting it maybe, I would say, but if he's not questioning it, I wouldn't.
Yeah, it was.
Considering on the five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll just. Approve all of them, they were all good right there.
Yeah, yeah. When's Gibbons starting on his, is that the list?
That's what, yeah.
No fun intended.
Truck's been sitting there for a long days.
I thought it was going, gonna go quickly at the skister and everything, then all of a sudden it's been gorgeous for a week. How's your move go? I, I canceled it. I, I bought a composite shed and put it up and. Told Teddy and told the storage society, we say. Why is it so hard? I said, Teddy can't, he told me it would be done September first. Now he's like, well, it'll be before the end of the year. I said, Teddy, you did my dirt work last year, I should've been the first on your list to move, uh.
Probably hasn't moved any others.
He said he had five to move before the year end. Like, okay.
What's, public works got going?
Really?
Oh, we're cutting trees. Me and Mike are gonna focus on alleys now since Bruce has done. For the week here, get those trimmed back and on the way, it's a little easier than like big trees. Uh, we have training tomorrow in Grand Forks, I guess, we're signing up for.
Grand Forks?
Yeah.
Thought it was mine, huh?
Who, who's, uh? Who's we?
Mike's coming with.
So they're all being buddy in town?
Bruce will be in town, I talked to him.
Oh.
It'll be on the call then?
Yeah.
Don't forget about that deal though by the bowling alley, the one that's over the cycle out there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Cause you're, I mean, when you're cutting trees.
Yeah.
He's gonna have a crash, so.
Yeah.
He got enough work, we hire Mike full time, he got enough work, he can busy.
Oh, yeah.
It's good, cause he's got hired.
Yeah. So Keith from Royal Water came through today, just stopping by and asked if we had anything to look at or whatever. Um, I did show him that line underneath the, that goes underneath the post plant. It actually does look like it's starting to actually move back now to a little bit. And he, uh, suggested, uh, cleaning that out and getting a bigger camera in there. Something like that, it's, you know.
Yeah.
Just for the future thing, uh, if we do, do, uh, some camering in the future for lines, but.
What if we just, we're kinda thinking that we're gonna probably move that line anyway, that's gonna be abandoned more than likely, you know?
Yeah, um, we should, we should fill it in then or something else.
Yeah, it has to, it has to be filled in.
Except up to the plant, cause they're, they also were used underneath the plant going south.
Okay. Yeah, um. Yeah, now it's about it, um. Mike's, Mike learned how to do, uh. Water meter change, also doing good at them, just getting those to do the one calls. And work orders. Been doing good. Takes a lot of weight off my shoulders. But yeah, everything's been going good, everyone's been working good. Yeah, like that, it's been doing good.
Going good. Open committee meeting, you down anything, Roger?
I do not.
No, yeah, I do. I had a concerned citizen call me, they were cleaning up the stuff around the post office there. Tri-City baby, and they swept it right into the starter.
Oh, so I wanted to check that out, um, what we're gonna do is just frame the sheets we brought in, suck it out, yeah.
Did he put in quite a bit or?
Put a little amount in there.
I mean, they don't need to be doing that.
They're pretty close to being done, and I think, I think that's only.
Looked like they were had cones up by his place, so I.
Yeah, they did mine this morning, they called.
Well, I haven't looked at the one by the school one.
No, they haven't did that one yet, they, they got their, their van parked there now, so they must be gonna do that tomorrow.
They must have it dug out, okay.
Yeah.
We had residents that were not happy about the heads up of being locked out of their driveways or into their driveways. So my request would be, in the future. If we have a schedule in our office of when they're doing what and what exactly they're gonna do, we can notify the residents.
So it was, we don't know for sure when they're coming.
That, that should be their job, it's simple for.
You know, and then we didn't know when they were coming, they, they didn't know for sure.
They didn't know when they were coming.
No.
Yeah, that was, I mean, somebody comes back from work and their stuff is blocked in and that's, that.
But we're gonna have to work a little.
That's what alleys are for, for a day, a day or two, and they can usually.
But again, vehicles are blocked in.
They should not, they should not.
Well, it should.
They should have knocked the door and said, hey, we're killing the street out today.
Or the door, the door, say tomorrow this is gonna disappear.
Cause we can do flyers or we.
Yeah, definitely, we gotta work better on that.
Yeah.
One thing I have is Larry McDonald.
I was down with COVID, so I couldn't go and tell him, but.
Oh, Larry McDonald's worried about his alley access. According to his abstract, that he's supposed to have alley access from the highway. You, he, he feels, he wants to get propane to his house, he needs to be able to have access to get from the highway to his yard. He bought Jeff Thomas's place. And because it's showing alley on the map, and his actual shows there's an alley there. So he wants to be able to.
How would they have access off the highway?
You'd have to build a.
There's not even a approach there, is there?
You'd have to build an approach.
So, but how, he goes. If I want a propane tank rod and they're gonna have to come off the highway, I mean, what are they, how do they do that? He goes, it shows it as an alley. He questioned me the day at work, and I said, I didn't see, I'll see what I can find out, but I don't.
I was on the van alley there.
But I mean, it shows, I mean, we know that it shows an alley on the books to Manning's.
Yeah, up to Manning's, yeah.
So would a truck be able to back? I know, because it's like on your grandma's place, right? So. Would they be able to back this down the highway, come off the highway and put a tank back there?
I don't know how they get back there for a tank, I mean.
That's why you're switching to propane?
He wants to get propane, but he wants to be able to have access to get.
I don't know how.
Truck back there.
We have to put it on the side, that goes so far back, so it comes to the front.
See, and he was told by Senex, so, or, oh, the real life planet has to be thirty feet away from a structure.
It's ten feet. It's five hundred's ten feet, ten thousand is thirty, so if he's getting a thousand gallon, that's thirty feet away from you.
Oh, yeah, and he said he would have.
I think it's a liberal stuff.
He said.
Yeah, but if you don't get it around the corner, they can.
How far is that from the street then?
They can.
Have enough over the pool.
Like, that's what I, that's what I asked too, I said, are you worried about filling it? He goes, no, I'm worried about getting a tank back there.
That would, yeah.
I don't know if you're.
He gotta come through your yard and pack.
Yeah.
Hear me, he has to come to your yard.
What's that?
He can come through your yard.
Well, everybody else is driving through my yard to get god dang Belzer's corn. Vehicles drive right through my yard to go over there to get corn. At least Teddy and Robin, they drive off the highway and drive behind your grandma's place to go over there and get it, but.
That might be where they could put that tank, if someone over there.
But real, I mean, the bad thing though was Paul's got it. Called or tilled all the way up to Manning's fence, I don't know if he went all the way by you. I, I gotta look again, but he, he tilled all the way up to Manning's fence.
Tank behind the house, they can back the propane truck up the driveway, go around the house and hold, you know, they got a lot.
Well, that, yeah, cause they do that at mine when the snow's, they keep it, yeah.
So, I don't.
Is that, that's their, how do they know, say?
Hell's out of it. Yeah, I'm in the park. Rudy, no, I'm neither, so. Pay some bills.
Besides the other one that's on there. Guess we'll remove the other one that's on there, the A two S one.
Yeah, I did.
Were there three of them more of them?
Yeah. So the nine hundred and eighteen is the one that Raleigh got me out of.
Two, four, fifty, then?
Yeah, one is for, uh, one month and one is for the next month.
That's a maintenance contract, right?
That's, yeah, the committees on those. Call orders, so.
Make a motion to pay the bills less than nine eighteen for two A two S.
Alright, motion been made, and second to pay the bills, all of the favors, second by the San I.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carried. You have anything else to discuss or? Anybody else have anything? Not, we'll say meeting in the jury.